Tuesday, October eighth of twenty twenty four. And this is the Stoughton City Hospital. And the first item would be the roll call.
Okay, Mijaski.
Yes.
Reeves.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
You're lucky.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here and in this room.
Thank you. Oznak Scanlan.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Peyton.
I've said that you.
Thank you. Uh Schumacher.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Denson.
Here.
Okay, we have eleven Alders present, uh one Alder absent and excused.
All right, thank you Candy. Uh we are certified in compliance with open meeting laws. Uh the next item would be public comment. Is there anyone in the room that wants to put a public comment? Um there was one signed up hotline. Nick, are you here? If not, we'll look for them when we get into the agenda item. Um that would take us to communications and presentation. Uh the first one would be Alder person. Schumacher. Introduction of historical fact.
All right, this time it's not going to be historic. This time it's going to be current. So, um because I know we've got a lot of presentations, so there's going on. I have to labor at two months. Um, uh you probably, some of you may have read the story. I know all of my ass has seen this story about the uh world record tomato that was grown here in Stoughton. So it's um not often that we get to connect Stoughton world record. So here we are with this one. This was Rick Gillett. Um lives back on Williams Drive. So if you have never seen the giant pumpkins that he grows, go out on Williams Drive because they're ridiculous. Um but his record tomato was ten point two pounds. They said it's the one of four that has ever been grown over ten pounds on earth. Um but he also holds the record for cantaloupe of fifty three pounds cantaloupe. So.
He's a good eater.
He says he doesn't eat them. Probably because of the genetic material.
Radioactive.
Maybe, yeah, we brought up that, you know, if anyone's ever seen the Gilligan's Island episode, let's get the radioactive seeds. It's hilarious. That's all I have.
All right, are there any communications from Alders? Okay, we have a number of presentations. And the first one tonight is from the Stoughton Public Library. And Director Ramsey is here. Yeah, you can come right up there and you're speaking right into the owl there. That's where the camera.
All right, I'll try to protect. Um I'll try to be brief, um because I know we have a lot of presentations. This presentation is uh similar to one that I give every year about uh the exemption from the county library tax. So one of the resolutions that you have before you as a piece of new business, uh R one forty nine twenty twenty four, is identical to ones considered in past years, commits the city to funding the library at at or above what's called the minimum appropriation. Um municipalities that need this obligation may request exemption from the county library. This resolution states that the city will fund the library at a level which enables the city to request exemption from the tax. So I want to take this opportunity, as I do every year, to talk briefly about county funding of libraries and about library funding in general. So how is the library funded? This pie chart shows the twenty twenty four budget year. Um you can see the contributions of Stoughton taxpayers in the orange there. That's in the form of the transfer from the city's general fund to the library board. Makes up the lion's share of our budget, twenty twenty four with seventy one percent. A smaller share, it's blue there, comes from Dane County in the form of what I'll call interchangeably county reimbursement or county service fee. Essentially, this is the county paying libraries for services provided to patrons living in Dane County. It's this funding that I'll discuss in more detail, uh but quickly I'll just mention there's some smaller slices of the pie there. One of them is about one percent. That is payments from adjacent counties for services provided to residents of those counties, which for us mostly means Rock County. Now, I'll get back to the minimum appropriation in just a second. Um but I hope you permit me a little digression uh to talk about how county funding for libraries is calculated. Um go on to the next slide. Uh county reimbursements are calculated based on use, which in our world means circulation. So checking out, physical things being checked out. This is not the best metric, but it is the easiest to collect. Our database knows where our library patrons live and where they pay taxes. Um and here you can see the top ten census tracts in which patrons live to check out books and other items at our library in the twelve month period from July twenty twenty three to June twenty twenty four. As expected, the majority of our users live in the city of Stoughton. Um but the rest of them come from the surrounding municipalities. Some of those that have a library, like the city of Evansville, Village of Oregon, but mostly those that don't. During this period, most of the patrons living outside of the city came from the towns of Dunkirk, Pleasant Springs, and Dunn, in that order. The reimbursements are paid to libraries by Dane County annually, based on this usage averaged out over the past three years. The formula is pretty complicated, but it takes into account both the services provided by the library, so those those things checked out, but also the facility, and that's based on our building's square footage. At the heart of the formula is cost per circulation. This is just the total expenditures divided by the number of things checked out. Uh state law requires counties to reimburse libraries at no less than seventy percent of cost per circ. Uh but because Dane County recognizes the value in public libraries to their communities, they reimburse at a hundred percent, as many other, but not all, uh counties do. You probably already figured out that the more people that use our library, the better, the more reimbursements we receive. Uh conversely, if there are disincentives that make our library less attractive, like outdated facilities or location, shabby outdated collection, um the the less county funding we receive. But this funding model based strictly on checkout or use of of library items places libraries in a sort of competition with one another for users and the county funding that goes along with those uses. Um that's, so that's one limitation of the current model. The other limitation came to light during the pandemic, when many of our buildings were closed and we were offering alternative methods of service like curbside pickup. The circulation numbers used to calculate county reimbursements are averaged out, as I said, over three years uh to avoid a disproportionate impact of one bad year. As you know, in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, we had more than one bad year. Um if those abysmal numbers from those years would have been included in the average, that would have hanked the reimbursements for all of the libraries, all the libraries paid back. Uh so for this reason, Dane County Library Board decided disregard those years uh for the purposes of calculating reimbursement. So the shock of the pandemic made us realize that what we had always known, circulation statistics don't tell the whole story of a of a library's value to its community. Notably, these statistics count only circulation of physical items. So the use of streaming and downloadable content isn't captured. In twenty twenty three, Dane County brought in a consultant to study reimbursement formulas. One of the results of this was a proposal for a new kind of reimbursement. Remember that I said that libraries are reimbursed for both the use of their library materials, but also for their square footage, for their facilities. Um for twenty twenty five, the Dane County Library Board proposed adding a third kind of reimbursement, one for programming provided to county residents. Unfortunately, this additional reimbursement was not included in the county executive's twenty twenty five budget, but the Dane County Library Board plans to try again um to have it included in the twenty twenty six budget. So that's how the county funds libraries. Back to the minimum appropriation, which is the subject of this resolution. It's not the only requirement, for example, from the county tax. Uh there are a set of four standards, used to be six, but now four standards that libraries must meet. The minimums for these standards, I think I've done them before. Yeah, there you go. Um the minimums for these standards is based on the municipal population. The minimum appropriation, the subject of this resolution, is based on equalized value of property. We've gone to the next slide. Um. Go on to the next one. So you can see here, it might be kind of hard to read, but the twenty twenty five minimum appropriation for the villages and cities in Dane County, um Stoughton is down there under the cities. Um the column labeled twenty twenty four APP shows the actual amount appropriated in twenty twenty four according to each library's annual report that we submit to the DPI. Uh just a quick look tells you that all or most municipalities are funding their libraries well above the minimum because the minimum is just that, the rock bottom figure. The minimum, by the way, is the amount that the municipality would have to pay in county library tax if it goes not to support a library or if the standards weren't being met. Um go to the next one. See here, the trend line for the minimum appropriation from the past nine years or so. Again, these amounts correspond to the property equalized value of property in the city. Um. Go on to the next one. You can see here uh on this table showing minimum versus actual appropriations for twenty twenty four. The only cities that are funding just slightly above the minimum are those where the equalized value has increased so rapidly and the minimum has grown so quickly that these cities are doing all they can to keep up. In twenty twenty four, Stoughton funded its library at a hundred and thirty percent of the minimum. For twenty twenty five, I don't have this on a slide, but the amount of the appropriation uh currently in the mayor's budget is uh seven eleven two eighty five. Um the minimum is six oh two six eighteen, so that means in twenty twenty five, the municipality will be funding the library a hundred and eighteen percent of the minimum. I'm getting to the next slide, the last one. Uh finally, I want to leave you with this, as as I do every year. This shows the support per capita of the Dane County libraries. In other words, the tax burden per capita on municipal residents being served by these libraries. This is calculated, of course, just by taking the municipal appropriation divided by the municipal population. You can see Stoughton down there. Um towards the bottom there, forty forty eight ninety five per capita. Um this is not to suggest the city isn't adequately funding the library, far from it. We're grateful for the support we've received in the mayor's twenty twenty five budget. Um what it does show, though, is that Stoughton residents and the residents of those surrounding communities are getting an incredible value for their tax dollars. Um and it shows that there's room to grow. As our community grows, we hope to grow right along with it. That's all I have.
All right, are there any questions? Good job. Well, that was easy, huh?
Yeah, sure.
All right, thanks for being here.
Thanks.
All right, the next presentation is coming from the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce. And I was like, Bailey's here, just give me a moment to size this for you.
You can take the notes off on the right.
I'm, oh, I'm not even sure how to do that.
It's the.
Huh?
It's the.
Note.
Oh, that's the open one. Oh, now it went away. It was fun. If not, you guys can read right along.
There it is. Open to this one.
Uh uh that'll be after that one. Oh, my land. That's.
We'll go back. We'll refer. We'll see if you stick to the script.
Probably not.
You just get a balancing wedge of cheese to go along with it.
I have the script, so I make sure I.
All right, I'm so sure it will be ready to go. Here we are.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. I am Kelly Oldboy. I'm presenting on behalf of the Events and Visitor Services from the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce. Uh the past year, I ran and most past six years, I've run two distinctly different roles at the Chamber. Uh Chamber events, which you would see out in the public, was Setnam Eye, Coffee Break, et cetera, and then the tourism through the Visitor Services Department um of the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce. And tonight I am here to present the twenty twenty four marketing activities from Visit Stoughton. Visitor Services is funded solely by the hotel tax revenue that we receive. It is a um. Oh, the Visitor Services has a commission that includes representatives from lodging, attractions, retail, Chamber of Commerce, and two at-large businesses, and they oversee and approve the spending of the annual budget, so there's no formal motion to be made tonight, so just sit back and enjoy. Um in twenty twenty four, um my overall budget kind of looked like I have, or overall budget looks like this, where there was a twenty five thousand dollar carryover from twenty twenty three. Um we brought in, or I budgeted about a hundred twenty five thousand dollars for room tax. Um special projects, uh that would be selling advertising and visitor guides, estimated to bring in two thousand dollars. Um so then the expenses that were budgeted for were the administrative expenses at thirty five thousand, operational expenses eleven thousand, or hundred eleven thousand. Operational expenses really include marketing, advertising, and any um additional hard expenses. To bring in a net income for the year around five thousand dollars. If we look to the room tax revenue comparison over the past few years, um obviously we see this really nice jump in twenty twenty three. Uh and I've had some challenges over the past couple of years, just kind of coming up on the curve end of COVID and seeing how our full room tax revenue is. Um so um I'll kind of tip on those points as we go forward. But in twenty twenty three, um the full of Visitor Service portion of room tax revenue was a hundred and fifty seven thousand. Um as I made this report back in a while ago, um we have received just under seventy thousand. So there's still a a good check to come for the quarter. All right, some projects that we've done, um spring reporting. So actually, last fall, um I hosted a fishing crew from Kentucky and Tennessee. They had Fishing University. They went out and highlighted on the hottest day of summer in Stoughton on Lake Yeganza. So they caught a couple bass fish, um but they're still aired on the Outdoor Channel and their other networks um in um March, I believe, of this year. So with that, there were some national commercials and just some really fun um some fun fishing on our beautiful lake. Right next one. And then I was super excited when I heard that Top Chef was coming to Wisconsin. I love that show. My my husband and I and my daughter frequent many uh farmers markets, so I told my advertisement rep, I want a commercial. And we're going to highlight Stoughton. So in Top Chef, we were able to get uh at the opening time, the only local buy on the spectrum panels in um Stoughton or the, excuse me, the Madison and Milwaukee market, which later ended up getting bought out by Madison, or actually Wisconsin, I think, the Department of Tourism bought the last um opportunity out. But we had some really fun commercials shot um around the area. We also did um a Hulu campaign, so anyone looking for a food channel, um there was a chance of doing that. And we had some over-the-top advertising. Uh within the Top Chef, what we featured on our commercials were our our drinking delicacies. So we hit up a few of the bars. Um we had our brewers, or we had a commercial for Marshons and Veggie Brew Pub. We had um Hidden Gems, which was the upstairs bar at Cheesers, and the Stoughton Opera House goes late lounge. And then we did mocktails and cocktails at Argo when to go. I think I topped them off. So that was a really fun um adventure to do and get some exposure for Stoughton on a large scale. So there's spring advertising, um just some general print pieces. The far left, we have a nice window case at the Beloit Travel Center for visitors coming in. Um the second one is the inside cover of the Opera House Guide. Um our our theme for Setnam Eye and the advertising is um kicking off. So I had a couple um fun pieces with our our Norwegian dancers. Um this was the um the back page of Viking Magazine, which is the Sons of Norway National Publication. And then Sons of Norway had a district conference in Indianapolis. That fourth page, uh fourth ad was on the inside cover of their program. Um and fun note, the district convention, it's kind of a range of ten states for Sons of Norway, will be coming to Stoughton in twenty twenty six. So. Get that convention center filled. Just kidding. But good, good reason that you can bring more of these in there. Um some other printing is from Wisconsin Publication. Those prints, oh, six editions each month, beautiful advertising statewide. Statewide. And then we jump into Setnam Eye. The you, or did I miss one there? Oh, yeah, year-round advertising, the one with the cute little family that um see Wisconsin, uh they captured. Yeah, see Wisconsin. So a lot of the tours of entities, DDBs, uh destination marketing organizations um have a nice page spread, highlight that. All right, and then I also updated our visitor map. Um. So far, we're doing good. It's kind of a tedious job. Every time I tend to update the visitor map, which means moving the dots, alphabetizing all the characters, somebody moves. So I think we're still good. This came out this summer, um so I it's up at the Chamber and other businesses in the community. So if you have anyone looking for just the general visitor map, um those are available. All right, now, Setnam Eyes, we're just getting to May in the whole workload of this. Um so this was our billboard that we had on the way into or out of Mount Harb. I can't remember which way. Um we had two billboards. No one kicks off a festival like Stoughton. We are taking claim that we are the start of festival season here in Stoughton, Wisconsin. Uh the alternating billboard in that area was um from the film, Film Show. No one crafts a festival like Stoughton. With the Setnam Eye classic, no one runs a festival like Stoughton. Um I won't go through the whole um media campaign I did, but there is a hyperlink in there in your time if you'd like to do the Canva presentation about what the um ad agency and I work with for the Setnam Eye campaign. All included in there. All right, some of the summary advertising that we did, um Taste of Stoughton, we spent um extra money on social media marketing and some onsite um opportunities uh with the fair. We partnered up a little bit more and I did some radio advertising with them as well as social media. Um how I partnered with the fair is we and the city, is I proposed to the three partners that we would be the three exclusive partners for the fireworks. I know that there had been a couple um challenges and and funding, um so, you know, coming up with the agreement, should the, or if the fireworks can stay on the Fourth of July, and if the city sticks with that, then Visit Stoughton could be a third partner and help with a third of the finances for that. So it was agreed upon last year, and we are proud to say it will happen again this year. Um that also helps the city budget. So um with the fireworks, we did some printed banners, I made some social media events, and again, we covered a third of the costs um for the expenses for the fireworks. Um we had some social media advertising for Catfish River Music Festival, uh Coffee Break Festival, and just finished up some art blocks. All right, so as I talked about with um carryover, I'm trying to get caught up. I've had more than that that twenty five thousand dollar carryover the past couple of years. And obviously, as you can see, I've been doing a lot more advertising, but it kind of comes to a point where I just don't want to throw money away and and just do dumb advertising. So talking with a couple of our stakeholders, um conversing with with Dave on some proper procedures, I made some investments um from the Visitor Services Fund. Um and one big reason on why these investments investments could be is though if there's an opportunity that's without, within, or outside of an annual budget of purchase, then there's a cushion to do that. Should that be a digital sign of peace? Or that's just kind of top of mind. So right now, there's twenty, I made a twenty five thousand dollar investment in a couple of different avenues um in the money market at One Community Bank, and then Wells Fargo CD, and latter investment through Journey Financial. All right, so end of year marketing. Um we do have ShopStall coming up, we have a big party holiday coming up, and then now the Downtown Merchants Association. Uh last year split together the Acoustic League Week, so that's kind of celebrating some activities to do between Christmas and New Year's. Um so I've already lined up with the advertising agency to do a nice two-month um marketing campaign on radio and and other avenues for November and December to kind of highlight all of these. All right, analytics. Um as I do some general um display advertising, this kind of shows our display advertising has gone. Um this is from twenty twenty three. Um. The highest month in December is sixty thousand um viewers. So if we go to the next slide, our twenty twenty four is a lot broader. So obviously, people are seeing that that ad that's like, um out on different websites. Um so in July, our largest was a hundred and fifty three displays. And then in the next slide, we have, um so this is our social, um just kind of our static monthly display. Um this is our total social advertising reach with Facebook, so we're getting over a million impressions on Visit Stoughton. All right, and the total twenty twenty four media buys, this graph just really shows and how to itemize this as different avenues of media that we did this year, um between print, between billboard, um between socials and television. It also breaks out what item is being advertised. So we have a breakout of Setnam Eye, um breakout of the fair. All right, so as we look at the, oh, memberships seem to jump in, sorry. Uh Visit Stoughton is also a proud member of the Destinations Wisconsin. This is a statewide organization similar to a chamber, but it's the destination marketing organizations um throughout the state. Um and they do a lot of really good activism uh for tourism. Um Destination Madison, we're a partner. Destination Madison is more than just Madison. Their focus is on Dane County, so we are a proud partner of them. And Circle Wisconsin is the tour travel um operations. Uh we can partner with them and get some more group travel in Stoughton. All right, to finish up, so I have a kind of a side-by-side twenty twenty four. Uh an estimated carryover from twenty twenty four was twenty five thousand. I've kind of built in another twenty thousand dollar carryover from this year into next year. Our room tax, um I low-ended the budget in twenty twenty four with a hundred and twenty five thousand. Obviously, we saw it was a hundred and sixty, same state. Um so in twenty twenty five, I estimated higher enough for the two. Um we adjusted the administration uh expenses a little bit and now the Visitor Services position will be its own part-time position, so that adjusts a little bit. Um operational expenses, I bumped that up. Um there's some new opportunities that I've kind of put on um the the plan for the next person coming in. Um so if that, those all work out well, at least in the budget for them to take over. So, um yeah, I think all my notes. Um so thank you uh again for coming here. And this will be my last time presenting on behalf of Visitor Services and the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce. Any questions?
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you for the.
All right. In your packet, you're going to see some photos uh from Emmy Roth. Um and basically, they're just in there to give the council on data where they are on their solar panel project. I don't have many details, maybe Bill has a few things you could share with us. And in the meantime, uh Opera House has set up their presentation.
I'm pretty sure that they actually are working on two, basically, they've got um four services actually at that facilities. Um there's a set of arrays, basically, that are set up to one service, set of arrays that are sold to another. Um they're completed with a one array. So actually tomorrow, we're taking, um they're actually going to a temporary interconnection into our system that we'll be on site for. We'll do their commissioning and then within twenty days thereafter, they will actually work with them directly and then commission that. Um it does sound like it's going to be a month or so, I believe, before the other array is completely completed and raised and commissioned, but there.
I know there was a question of finance, but I don't know if you can really ask her.
Uh.
Or was it Brett?
Is it the, yeah, the square footage of the array or what? Well, the percentage of our purchase, do they have a calculation for what their percentage of um energy expense that the solar panels will last?
I don't know that off the top of my head. At one point in time, though, they did actually ask us to do an analysis and we could share that with them. They range in load from about a megawatt to one and a half, and this array is um nine hundred and eighty um kW, so they're just under a megawatt. So, you know, I think, you know, it, so what I perceive for them um is they will have some demand shaving, but because of the facility and they do tend to speak later in the day, they're, I think their demand opens later. So ultimately, this will be bought on Friday.
Yeah, they'll be pretty heavy with being with so many refrigerated rooms and maps in there. You know, I have a second question. Do you know, and um what square footage they've ended up with on top of their, on the roof and their arrays together?
I don't, but I can definitely get you that data. We have it all.
Yeah, we're just curious to know where it was, where. Yeah, we're just curious to know where, where it was, where, like, the public work project and what was, what was going on in the fire station and maybe see what to show, like, what square footage is some of these major projects are.
I think it would be really cool if we have that for Emmy Roth, like, to the fire station. You know, public person, we, you know, we were talking about the sustainability plan later, but we'd really need to have a whole, a personal about what's going on in Stoughton with silver and what, how much it actually gets us off from using other types of energy. I think it'd be kind of like cool as well.
This aside, along those lines is that we continue this, all the growth that we're having. You'll see it in our budget, um, at the next meeting that we continue to, our, our loads don't change. Um, they're not growing. Anything, we're still predicting that they're going to be seen in the fine custom. And now probably just to be, if you assume the conservation and solar, um, we're really not seeing any growth from them.
So another thing I'll share with you, as long as you brought that up, uh, Regina is on October twenty-third, I've been invited to do, uh, a presentation just slipstream. It's going to be a webinar. And it's going to be highlighted, it's the sustainability efforts that we've done. So uh, right now I'm at thirty-seven slides, so as I was going through it and collecting, um, you don't really realize how much you've done until you actually sit down and tally things up. And it's been, you know, worked it, then city council, things that you've approved, it's been community effort from, um, sustainability committees, sustainable Stoughton. Obviously, things that Stoughton Utilities and our other departments have done here in the city. And on the same day, the October twenty-third, there is an all-around Dane County event at Marchand's that night. Where sustainability is, is really the subject. Um, so I would encourage anyone, um, that would like to learn more or participate to show up up at that at Marchand's that night. So what it demonstrates is that Stoughton is is really on the map and we're being recognized for what we're doing here and it's starting to get out in Dane County and and, you know, my goal, a part of my presentation is to hopefully it'll inspire others that we can learn from each other. So is that why the other presentations? Maybe there's some things that we can pick up from the other communities as well. Any other questions as far as?
If you want any help, um, reviewing your slides or brainstorming?
Yeah, I can send you what I have.
Yeah.
I have a rehearsal coming up, uh, next week. So I have video of me myself. And if you see all the times out and comes off, I appreciate that. Um, Opera House, are you ready?
I'm ready.
You should be able to share your screen and we'll see what happens when you do. And then you can introduce the presenter.
Fine. Yeah, well, it's a good news. Uh, that like transitional phase on meeting classes where I don't remember that I need them and like can't figure out where I can see this. So this, this isn't in your packet. We're just giving it to you real time. It's maximum.
Be the square box with the arrow pointing up.
Yeah, I can't do it.
I hope it's moving.
It's happening. All right. Well, for those of for those of you who, um, who haven't had a chance to sorry, it's three months. All right, I guess. Um, so for those of you that haven't had a chance to, uh, meet yet, and I think there's a couple yet. Uh, Bill Bram, I'm the director of the Opera House. Um, I've been working for the city since two thousand and four. I, uh, in January, it's going to be eighteen years since I was, uh, hired as the Opera House Director. So that's a long time. Um, but, um, for the first nine seasons of my, uh, time at the Opera House as the Opera House Director, I worked, uh, as a team with Christina Dahlhausen, who's behind me, that's her, yeah. And, um, and she was the event coordinator. I was the director. We worked together on the initial sort of push to, uh, start developing the Opera House. In twenty-sixteen, Christina moved her family, uh, over to the triple suite gym. Uh, she was three boys and a husband, so they're, uh, plenty of outdoor space, which is important for, uh, young boys, uh, because of these boys. Uh, but, um, and we just shared a lot, but while she was over there, she started eventually doing some more leveraging her skill sets that she learned here to start doing economic development work for Vernon County as well as for the city of Oroko. So, um, when the Opera House Friends Association, which is SOFA, it's S.O.H.F.A., so it's not SOFA. But SOFA decided that, uh, they wanted to have a development coordinator come on board and start looking at how we were coordinating our development and our funding and thinking about the future. Uh, Christina seemed like a real natural fit. She has a real solid sense of institutional history. Um, and she has a whole new skill set that she has developed over the course of time that she wasn't at the Opera House. So these last few months, it's been, uh, delighted to have her back. And I'm happy with, uh, the things she's accomplished so far. And just, just a little update. Um, let your appetites grow, hopefully really great things to come down the road. And here's Christina.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, everybody. Some people look familiar. Some people look like new friends. Yeah, good to see you. I'm Christina Dahlhausen, and the development coordinator contracted was contracted right down to do development work for the Stoughton Opera House. So today I have actually great news and a great update to share. Uh, I'll be talking about the importance of the Stoughton Opera House in the community and how it evolved over time and became a crucial part of the community's cultural and economic fabric. We'll briefly discuss where we were, where we're now, and where we intend to go. I know you've just come out of a finance committee meeting and, um, and it wasn't overview of the budget and what's to come. So I'm really glad that I can be able to share some really good news today and this great update, of course. And today's all about sharing an update about the economic impact of the Stoughton Opera House and how the city's investment has contributed to that significant impact. Let's briefly just kind of start here where we were. So originally named the City Auditorium, the theater first opened in nineteen oh-one, sharing a building with City Hall, the Fire Department, City Jail, and the Library. And for over fifty years, it was a cultural hub, hosting everything from musical productions, vaudeville shows, theater shows, the temperance meetings, graduation ceremonies, and class plays. However, extensive water damage led to its closure in the nineteen fifties. And the clock tower deemed unsafe was removed. For the first twenty years, or for over twenty years, the city had a brick building without its iconic clock tower. Isn't that hard to imagine now? Well, in the nineteen eighties, a surge of community pride led to a movement to restore both the theater and the clock tower, bringing back the symbol of the city. Thousands of volunteer hours led by John and Judy Bondering, you can see them off to the right there. Of course, you can also see how the clock tower was brought back on to the, onto the nub of the, the brick building. And along with private donations and financial support from the Jeffreys Foundation, it contributed to become an eighteen-year restoration effort of the theater on February twenty-second of two thousand and one, exactly one hundred years. After the first play ever to be performed on the sixth stage, the restoration was complete. And just with that, there was the grand reopening in two thousand and one. You may recognize the fire curtain from nineteen oh-one also restored. Amazing. Opera House reopened to the public with a vision in two thousand and one, not just be a historical monument, but a working community asset that could contribute to their vitality in Stoughton. Initially run and booked by volunteers, and after a couple of false starts, the city invested in a few key staff positions. And with that, there was a turning point. In two thousand and seven, Bill Bram became the Opera House Director alongside myself as the event coordinator. Together, we strategized and worked on developing a new marketing strategy and a membership program that would help with growing the patron base. And it changed the strategy for curating the program that would not just serve the community, but expand far beyond Stoughton's borders. We expanded the program because more shows mean more tickets sell and more people come to the Opera House in downtown Stoughton. Pretty solid plan. Between two thousand and seven and two thousand and fourteen, the number of shows expanded from twelve shows a year to an incredible eighty shows. Yes, we were a little tired, but we, uh, we did our very best and we worked day and night to get it, to get it to there. But we attracted audiences not just from Stoughton, but from Madison, Danesville, Milwaukee, Chicago, Michigan, Iowa, all over the Midwest. The Opera House was building a reputation here as one of the finest performance venues in the Midwest. And it regularly attracted national and international performers. The Stoughton Opera House has also played a pivotal role in branding the city of Stoughton. As the Opera House grew in popularity, it became more than just a venue. It has established Stoughton as a cultural destination. This marketing, branding, cultural mechanism has helped define Stoughton's unique identity, distinguishing Stoughton from other towns, which in turn has helped drive economic growth and further investment in our city. To accompany this growth and to ensure the Stoughton Opera House has a secure, vibrant future for years to come, the Stoughton Opera House Friends Association, SOFA, was established as a five oh-one C three nonprofit organization in two thousand and fourteen. The Stoughton Opera House's association has about three primary functions. They coordinate and manage the Catfish River Music Festival, and just this past July was on its tenth year. They build and administer the SOFA Endowment, a collection of charitable funds that support the mission programs and facilities of the Stoughton Opera House. And they encourage and accept charitable gifts from donors, private, public foundations, and corporate entities on behalf of the Stoughton Opera House. SOFA's allowed over the years since two thousand and fourteen, the last ten years. Through fundraising and securing local grants, SOFA has been able to accomplish many capital improvement projects for the Opera House and the Opera House Building. Uh, it is a little bit small to see, but hearing a blue fire curtain restoration, upgrading the digital lighting, adding handrails, remodeling the dressing rooms, rewiring the backstage and house electrical systems, replacing the piano, construction of portable stage ramps, expansion of public restrooms, upholstering the seating. This is where we get all excited. The new cushions on the seats. That's amazing. The Ghostlight Lounge, funding of development and replacing the aisle runners. SOFA's contribution is over a half a million dollars. So where are we now? The current status and economic impact? Well, we've endured the pandemic. But unlike other theaters that went dark, uh, we, we were able to envision the creation of the Ghostlight Lounge to allow more patrons to spend more time and more money with us, as well as purchase and install high-quality video and sound equipment for live stream shows. These pandemic-related projects had a forethought to be done when the theater was staged to reopen for the public. And since the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, we're back to pre-pandemic operations at eighty shows a season. The city's investment over the years has had a real impact. Fifteen percent of the Opera House's annual budget comes from the city investment, while the Opera House covers the remaining eighty-five percent through ticket sales, memberships, and other revenue streams. And fifteen percent of that investment is two percent of the overall city of Stoughton's property tax levy that goes towards Opera House operations. This is some real data up here on the screen here of what arts and culture can tell, it can impact our economy. I'm going to start with the state of Wisconsin, then the Dane County level, and then I've really drilled in the economic impact of what's happened here locally in the city of Stoughton. Does Wisconsin arts and culture impact? There was a comprehensive economic impact study done from Americans for the Arts and the Wisconsin Arts Board that conducted from two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-three. And as you can see, as you, as you can probably read as well, but there is just under five hundred million dollars in event-related spending by audiences. Event-related spending is something I just want to, uh, describe what that is. That's when you go to a show, you have the price of the ticket, but above and beyond the price of the ticket is you go to the restaurant, you spend money there, you go to the retail shops and spend money there at gas stations. So that's event-related spending. Anybody that comes to any of a show, any show, um, beyond the ticket price, that event-related spending is within that community that happens where the show is. Nationally, the arts and economic prosperity study, nationally, basically the American arts culture sector is a hundred and fifty-two billion dollar industry. So it's recognized all over the country. Here's a little breakdown of Dane County. According to the Economic Impact Study for Dane County, the arts and culture industry generated, generated just under two hundred and twenty-one million in direct event-related spending for Stoughton as part of that Dane County. And it generated over twenty-five million in local and state government revenues. Locally, the Stoughton Opera House is a key driver of restaurants, uh, a key driver of downtown economy, attracting visitors who spend money at the restaurants, the shops, the hotels, gas stations, and more, like I discussed. This is called the event-related spending. And first, I'd like to demonstrate the Opera House over the year. This will just kind of help us get a, an idea of what's happened. Remember that turning point I spoke of, two thousand and seven to two thousand and fourteen? Do you remember that pandemic? Yes. Well, not only did we survive, but we recovered. We've met and exceeded pre-pandemic record numbers. From two thousand and eight, our annual ticket revenues were at a hundred and eight thousand. And then just like snapshots throughout the time, of course, twenty twenty didn't do so well, it was only ninety-six thousand. But now, year-to-date, you can see just the bars going up and up. We're now at seven hundred and fifteen thousand in two thousand and twenty-four, and that's just year-to-date. So we're growth and recovery. Membership revenue. I think this is an important thing to look at too. Uh, as our oh-eight, oh-nine season, we're just at twelve-five for membership revenue, the turning point. Looks like we, we went over a hundred thousand in eighteen, nineteen, and there was the pandemic, but that didn't slow down the memberships as much. But then it really went over pre-pandemic in twenty-four, twenty-five to a hundred and sixty, and that's the date. In two thousand and eight, there was a hundred and forty-four members. In two thousand and fourteen, there was one thousand one hundred and seventy members, and now in twenty twenty-four, there's fifteen hundred and fifty-six members so far. It shows that the result of the city's investment over the years has had very positive results. I call this in a favor, PlaceDynamik, a community development consulting firm I worked with extensively during my time as economic development coordinator for Vernon County. And we were able to access this heat map using place AI's geo-tracking tool. This is where they track people's phones. Yes, creepy. But it happens. And it, and it gives us some really good data and really good information. This map provides an annual twenty twenty-three snapshot of where people are visiting from that come to downtown Stoughton. And there were some challenges with tracking devices. You know, I said, hey, look at, I want to look at all the downtown districts, and I also wanted to track them right at three eighty-one East Main Street. And they had a little trouble tracking the phones while people were either going into the building or maybe people turn off their phones or things like that. But we were still able to get some really good data. And we can expand upon this and use this to inform our future targeted marketing efforts. So please note every year, we also conduct patrons' zip code analysis as, um, as part of our marketing strategy. So this refines our outreach with patrons all the time. But I find that interesting. The average calling time is of one hour and forty-five minutes, or I'm sorry, a hundred and forty, forty-nine minutes. I did a short survey of downtown businesses just to see if they are feeling the impact of the Stoughton Opera House. And it's not showing up on your screen anymore.
Maybe stop sharing and then resharing it.
We do that?
Can we do that?
It might be a delay.
Uh,
We don't stretch?
That's a lot. Let's see. Here. There.
Have I ever really been talking that long? But it's just the phone.
Yeah. Is it maybe back?
It seems like it's back.
There it is.
Mm-hmm.
Not as a presenter anymore, but. Uh-oh.
Anyways, I got some great quotes on downtown businesses.
You never lose a mic these skills, do you?
I can't.
So I, I did for a downtown business, um, survey, just to see if they felt the economic impact of, of the Opera House. And I got some great response, um, including retail and galleries and restaurants and Airbnb's that all got back to me. They do see an increase in revenue, sixty percent of them see an increase in revenue and purchases at their downtown businesses on Opera House event dates. They do see an increase in revenue, sixty percent of them see an increase in revenue and purchases at their downtown businesses on Opera House event days. Some say their revenue increases ten to thirty percent on event day. And here's some quotes, but I'm just gonna pick out one for the sake of it. "The Opera House is an anchor for downtown Stoughton that draws a diverse audience, yet one that enjoys finding all the treasures that downtown Stoughton has to offer. These are people who would not otherwise have visited Stoughton, but the Opera House is central in bringing visitors to the city." The next slide, my favorite slide. Finally, this is what's being spent in our local economy in accordance to how many tickets we sold, attendance numbers at our community events, and the Catfish River Music Festival. By applying data from the Wisconsin Department of Tourism, Longwoods International, UW Extension Population Lab, and Americans for the Arts Research, and threw all that information together, and in just the '23-'24 season alone, we had an impact of over $3 million. We can determine local day tripper and overnight percentages from the data and research conducted, as well as identifying our regional population, which is 800,000, by the way. And what's interesting is Madison is a day tripper. Because the amount of time, you don't think you're coming from like the north side of Madison to come to Stoughton for a show. You know, it takes a little bit of planning and to stay for a little bit, the restaurants and things like that. So just over $3 million in event-related spending in our local economy, which is above and beyond the cost of the ticket for just one season, is a very impressive number and an impact. What's the key to the future? The key to the future is working with SOFA, developing endowments to help not only fund special projects, but potentially operational costs as well. The key to the future is also having a coherent fundraising and development plan. We know things get tighter and tighter every year, and we know expenditures are going to continue to grow, so we're taking and implementing steps now to prepare. It should be noted that the Opera House has been somewhat unconventional compared to other traditional community assets and economic engines on how they've grown. Typically, these entities start with a strong foundation, like an endowment, and then use that financial security to drive with programming and community engagement. However, the Opera House took a different path. We focused on restoring the theater, invested in programming, marketing, and built a loyal audience base. Only in the last 10 years, of course, we're building that endowment to help sustain us long-term. But that upside-down growth is now positioned to pay off. Thanks to the city's investment, our growing patron base, the expertise of our staff, and our volunteers, dedicated work of SOFA, together, we built a strong foundation. And now, we're at the little moment to not only maintain that growth, but to expand upon it, ensuring the Opera House continues to be an economic powerhouse for the city of Stoughton. How are we gonna do that? We have a plan. We're gonna build our connections. This is developing those key relationships with decision-makers and funders across Wisconsin and the Midwest, positioning Stoughton as the cultural destination and leader in the creative economy. And those relationships are with Dane County Government and Dane Art and Create Wisconsin Arts, Wisconsin, the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, Wisconsin Humanities, UW Extension, Granting Foundation, Cooperation Investors. But getting out there and talking to the people, making people know, "Stoughton, Stoughton, we're here, Stoughton Opera House." And they're crucial for our path forward. I actually would like to plan to adapt this economic impact presentation to present at the Dane County Board of Supervisors meeting to let them know of the impact that Stoughton is making. I also would like to talk to my friends at the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, they have conferences every year. Because I think that Stoughton has such an important story to tell about the economic benefit of when a community decides to invest in itself. It's just extraordinary. Stoughton definitely has a story to tell that can be motivational for other communities. Also, we're gonna do season and show sponsorship. We're working on those now. We have a weekly email that goes out, and it's about 30,000 unique addresses. So anybody that becomes a season or show sponsor, they'll be in that email list that gets out to all these unique addresses. And that basically, they can align their brand with our brand, and it just holds a lot of weight. We're gonna seek and secure grant funding. Right now, SOFA's Development Coordinator, oh, that's me, has approximately 90,000 in grant requests onto foundations and corporate funders, and more in the pipeline awaiting for the granting period to happen. It doesn't just, and just like, yeah, you know how grants work. You have to wait for the fund, the ask period, you get in there, and then you wait six months or however long it takes. But getting ahead of those things is so imperative. And these funds, if awarded, fingers crossed, will allow us to expand our programming, fund projects, and strengthen our financial foundation. We're also looking at new revenue streams. We're talking about Stoughton Opera House merchandise. We see great potential in that. T-shirts, hats, posters. That's available at shows as well as online. That's another revenue stream. We're also considering a large outdoor show at Matt Park where we can accommodate a much bigger audience. Another opportunity to generate significant, top revenue. In just a few weeks, I believe, late October, early November, you'll see an end-of-year fundraising campaign that we're going to launch to grow SOFA's endowment. Our goal is $150,000, but we always aim for higher, as we can tell from the work that we've done. Though we're always aiming higher, these funds are critical for sustaining the Opera House. We're going to continue to evolve our season show and marketing strategy with an increased focus on digital platforms, as well as blending our print and brochure. This blended approach helps us engage both loyal patrons and attract new ones. We're always evolving that all the time. At the end of the year, with the help of SOFA and the city and the Opera House, I'm gonna help produce, we're all gonna work together, but produce a fundraising strategic plan document. Where basically, we can get this document to get ahead of identifying any upcoming projects and opportunities, address any budget gap, and point new ways to generate revenue and strategize on implementation, get ahead of grant deadlines and funding sources, including season show sponsorship and Catfish River Festival sponsorship. We're also gonna strengthen these partnerships and the communication by building those connections with those state organizations. And why does the city investment matter? Well, as I said before, fifteen percent of the Opera House's annual budget comes from the city investment, while the Opera House covers the remainder eighty-five percent through ticket sales, sponsorships, and other revenue streams. That fifteen percent investment is two percent of the city of Stoughton's property tax levying annual budget. This investment has been essential to our success and the success of the community. And as we look towards the future, the city's support remains a vital piece of the puzzle. Stoughton has it all. From an economic development perspective, all the things that I've listed here, from everything from a vibrant arts and culture scene to a good education, healthcare, housing, outdoor recreation. And of course, Dane County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the state. And Madison, there's people from young families that are looking for places that have an easy commute as well as character. Stoughton has it all. If I was trying to look at something from an economic development lens, you have all those qualities, and Stoughton has all those things. So it's well-primed to continue to grow as it is. But again, I wanna thank you for your investment as we continue to grow, bringing even more economic value for the city of Stoughton and ensuring that the Opera House thrives for future generations to come. But let's continue to build this legacy together, guys. How about it? Taking what we've achieved and amplifying it even into a greater future for our community. Thank you all so much for listening. Appreciate it.
You. Are there any questions for Christina or Bill?
I was wondering why you didn't start off singing like you used to.
Oh, I thought about that. I thought about bringing my glasses.
Yeah, so back for an encore.
I can go back for an encore, just invite me back. Thank you. No, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. The next presentation is coming from the Sustainability Committee through the City's GPD, reviewing a plan at their last meeting. I believe Adrian can present that for us. For some reason, it's not centering on each page on there.
I did not bring my glasses, so. Yeah, hi, I'm Adrian Nina. I'm the permanent chair of the Sustainability Committee. And as Mayor Swadley mentioned earlier, Stoughton really has accomplished a lot of sustainability projects across all scales, from replacing LEDs in Main Street, like to the LED replacement project in 2021 that was citywide. So small to citywide scale, really, really amazing work. And we should celebrate all of those. We should celebrate the hard work of the staff who make it all happen. I want to celebrate how future-focused our city council has been to support these efforts. Your vision for the future and enabling these is really important, so I wanna acknowledge that. And I also wanna mention that, you know, the broader support and volunteerism in our community is also a really key piece of this. So with that, I will talk about the Sustainability Plan. From the time that City Council created the Sustainability Committee, when the committee convened in August, it's been a long time. We think it's going. I'll try not to talk too fast, but I'll try not to take up too much more of your time tonight. The committee has done a lot of work and spent a good year assessing sustainability plans across the state of Wisconsin, throughout Dane County, gaining foundational knowledge and listening to city staff. Various people came and presented to the council over this timeframe. And the committee also leaned on sustainability professionals to learn as much as they could before moving forward with any specific plans. Finally, in 2022, the committee set a mission and vision, and one of those items was to create this plan. You can continue. We can continue. There's a webpage. A really key component of this plan was the community engagement. So I will say there is a community practice called the Green Tier Legacy Communities. You will get reference in the plan. But Green Tier Legacy Communities is a voluntary, non-regulatory group of practitioners, people from city councils and department, public works departments across the state, representing different counties, towns, cities, villages, that come together to learn about sustainability practices together. And through that work, they have defined six sort of focus areas that people can kind of focus their sustainability efforts on. And the Sustainability Committee decided to align the focus areas in the plan with the Green Tier Legacy Community focus areas. The committee hired UW Extension and engaged in fifteen months of public engagement. I will say, part of what I do professionally is a community-centered clean energy project throughout the state of Wisconsin. And what we're doing is a very similar effort to what Stoughton already did. So Stoughton really did an excellent job in getting this broad outreach. You can continue on to the next slide. So there was a community dialogue event that brought people together to engage in participatory visioning and discussion, to talk about the focus areas, mission, the vision, and the goals. Go ahead. There were a lot of key takeaways, and working with UW Extension was so critical in collecting good data that we could use to kind of drive the direction of the plan. People overwhelmingly felt that the engagement was important, that the community dialogue was insightful. They felt like it was a cross-building process, which is really, really important, and a lot of ideas were generated. There was also a community survey, and there were a lot of takeaways from the survey. A couple are highlighted now. One commenter said, "Do this now or get left behind. Stoughton has gained momentum and visibility. Let's keep moving forward." Five hundred ninety-four people responded to this survey, and 237 people took the time to write comments. UW Extension said, "This is really good. This is better than what they see in most communities." The Bravo to our community again for being engaged and sharing the help. A couple of key takeaways from the survey, people really care about health of our local lakes, rivers, and our groundwater. Eighty-four percent of the survey respondents said that sustainability should be a priority for the city of Stoughton. And seventy-nine percent said that people are okay with the city spending money on sustainability initiatives in the short term if the ROI in the long term is positive. And finally, UW Extension hosted focus groups with these five stakeholder groups to learn a little bit more about what these key players in our community thought about sustainability, learn what they were already doing, and to learn how they wanted to be supported by the city or collaborate with the city to continue making progress in this area. Some of the key takeaways, consistently, the need for a sustainability coordinator to come up. These stakeholders want to collaborate across sectors and want to build partnerships. They do, they did want clear goals and indicators to work forward. And they want the city to be a container post dialogue for learning, collaboration, and resource sharing. Hopefully, you'll agree that we covered these bases in the Sustainability Plan that you have in your practice. Oh, yeah, and one more piece of this. We also conducted a staff survey. And what we did learn was that, you know, as with any effort, right? We need funding for initiatives, we need funding for the project, and staff time and training is always going to be a barrier. So we acknowledge that resources are difficult, but we think there are solutions and a lot of opportunities. So hopefully, we can move in the right direction. I'm gonna go ahead and just breeze through this really quickly. I had the privilege of meeting with our department staff to take an early version of our plan from this spring and iterate with them and get their feedback to kind of get the plan where it needed to be, to be feasible and practical. In the meantime, I think if anyone knows, a couple of our committee's recommendations for sustainability, funding for ARBO, were approved, which is great news. We're really excited about that. And as Mayor Swadley mentioned earlier, there is the Sustained Dane Event at Marshawn on October 23rd, and a representative from our committee will be giving a presentation. And the timing, hopefully, will be a really good opportunity to build that momentum as this and is reviewed by you all and hopefully gets you to move on through this process. We have kind of some low-hanging fruit, some things that just need somebody to check the box and get it done that don't necessarily require a budget to do in the plan. We have broken up things into phases. And the phases are meant to say, hey, like, we anticipate that the city will initiate some sort of action on this item between years two or between years three and five. We're not trying to lock the city into tight deadlines. The plan is meant to be iterative over a long period of time to provide guideposts for the city. So yes, we do have some Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three. Um, so yes, we do have some Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three actions that we would like the city to initiate within those timeframes. Um, but understand that things change quickly and that um, there is room to adapt along the way. Um, so you'll notice a couple of things in here um, that we find important. Obviously, energy efficiency projects. Um, energy is such a key component of sustainability. Um, I was able to leverage a professional contractor of mine and have the Office of uh, Sustainability and Clean Energy review our plan. And um, they did acknowledge that it aligns with the state's clean energy plan and have um, expressed their support for our energy strategy. Um, shade tree populations are really important. The city already does excellent work in this area. Uh, we just want to continue fostering that through this plan. Um, obviously, water sources, um, composting is a big one. And um, eventually, kind of seeing some um, longer, bigger, uh, bigger, longer-term effort um, all the way to like pilot them and demonstration projects, uh, which could be a lot of different things. Um, it could be testing out different permeable pavement options. It could be testing out a rain garden on a city property. Um, but um, kind of a broad range of, of options here. Um, so implementation, um, there's been a lot of discussion about what this looks like. Uh, you'll notice in the plan that the very first thing we present is a cross-cutting strategy. And um, we have asked that the city, that city staff led by Mayor Swobly would sit down um, after the plan is approved to come up with kind of a year-one plan for how um, the, uh, some initial project will be initiated and happen. Um, we think that, you know, there are a lot of great committees in the city and the um, expertise that the various people bring that serve on those committees uh, should be leveraged. Um, our community-based organizations are a really key component of this. The stakeholders that participated in our focus group are a really key component of this. There are intersecting priorities across all of these groups. And as much as we can, we should be uh, working together. We should be seeking those opportunities. Uh, some of our key partners for implementation um, are listed here. There are a lot of them um, from the local level to the regional level, county level, state level. Um, one that's on here that's really important is Green Tier Legacy Communities because we do want the city to become a member of that organization. Uh, the public is ready. As you saw, the community is ready. Uh, that one survey responded that said, do it now or else. Um, we want to continue building momentum on what the city has already accomplished. Um, and just continue expanding those efforts and making progress. Um, like I said, this is a long-term guide. These are guideposts for the future. There's room for adaptation. There's room for flexibility and iteration along the way. Um, so um, we can check that first. Next up off the list, uh, Daisy D did recommend um, the plan for approval, approval. We um, want to put this in your hand and see what happens next. Uh, we are asking for, you know, your care and thought and attention. Um, if there is feedback, now's the time for us to implement it. And um, you know, as a committee, we want to be here to support the implementation of the plan. Um, but we also um, would like guidance on what that should look like and, and how that will be. Um, so we have scheduled a special meeting for next Monday to discuss the future of the Sustainability Committee. And um, I think there will be some conversation um, about that in the near future. That's what I've got. So anybody have any initial questions for me?
Go ahead.
No, I don't have any question. I just want to thank you for all the hard work you, maybe it's putting during, you know, multiple years and the number of engagement with the community. I think this is really good. Thank you guys for all your hard work.
Any else? Any questions?
Adrian, can you speak to the simplified sustainability plan and the detailed sustainability plan in our packet? And perhaps if questions come, how do we plan to deal with it?
Yeah. Um, okay, so there are two versions provided. One is higher-level kind of strategies, actions, no extra plus. Um, if that's the level that you want to engage in at great. And then if you have questions along the way, you can reference the detailed version um, to see if that helps clarify anything. Um, if not, then you can direct your questions to... Is it me?
Uh, you can probably send them to the clerk.
Okay.
Yeah, send them to Candy and she'll gather them and send them on to you. That way you get them all.
Yeah. Yeah, um, if you just want to go straight for the detailed version, um, you know, I think in an early version of the plan, we had quite a narrative crafted. Um, but we broke out the really, the most important pieces and tried to pair it with the strategies and the actions uh, to provide the context for the actions. Um, so those, you know, are, uh, appear in both drafts. Um, but what you won't see in the simplified draft are sort of the potential impact and then those um, anticipated start timelines for actions and kind of who the most responsible party would probably be for the action. Um, so that's kind of where the difference is.
Um, and I saw your timeline, but I don't know if it was shared with council. So I, I think, maybe you can clarify this. I think the plan was that you'd like us to send those comments to the clerk by a certain time. Um, and then...
Yeah, we talked about that. So you're having a special meeting Monday night. Are you gonna have your regular meeting the following week?
Uh, so I think our regular meeting will be two weeks later.
So what we're hoping to do is if you have any thoughts or suggestions that you would send them to Andy by the seventeenth. That way you can gather them and send them on so the Sustainability Committee can take those into consideration. We're not asking for approval tonight. We were really just wanting to get the document in front of everybody. And hopefully, that gives you enough time to digest. If it doesn't, we can talk about that uh, when we get into act and item later on. If you feel like, you know, nine days from now or a week from now isn't enough time, I think we can talk about what that might look like. Um, and then the other things um, we talked about was, you know, the future of the committee. That might be something you guys want to engage in the conversation tonight or it could be a future discussion at the council meeting. We have members that have been on the committee for over three years now. I think they would like to have some of their Monday nights back. Um, there were as many months where they met twice a month, which is a huge commitment. And some of them might have been there since day one, which is amazing. Um, others that came on late later had to go through the task of getting caught up, which is a lot of work to do. Um, so those are kind of the things that we were looking for later on tonight. Get back to that, but otherwise, are there any... Go ahead.
I just, um, when I pulled up the documents and I read both of them, the highlighted part that should have been hot links were not working.
Oh.
And so, so all your blue highlight stuff were not working. And I was really wanting to read a lot of your references because you put a lot of time and effort into it.
Mm-hmm.
And they're not working. So I don't know, in translation, multiple downloads that they were not saving.
Yeah.
Do you have time to get together with work through that next year?
There should be a mirror copies that maybe Andy just needs a part of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Just some of them, the thing copied and pasted and whatnot. So maybe, you know, they get lost in the translation.
Right, okay.
So we can work on that.
Get them updated.
Yeah, because I really want to read all these things. I don't want to spend the time researching.
Okay.
Anything else, uh, where I look, are you sticking around or you have to? Go to bed or...
Oh, no, they're in bed by now, but they better be.
We still log in up for that.
Um, I mean, if, if people are not ready to go to bed, I'll stick around and love to hear your any recommendations.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for being here and then we'll get into our, our regular items tonight. Um, the first one is the consent agenda. Um, there's a number of items in there. Um, I would advocate a motion to approve the consent agenda. So, motion by Johnson is your second?
Second.
Second, I should mark her. Would anybody like anything acted on separately?
I, I just had a question. In the council minutes, really, I was surprised that it didn't have anything from them like who set the motion, who approved it and all that usually that did that.
Oh, um, we can pull that out and bring it back if you'd like.
Sure, because I missed the last meeting. I was kind of curious to see what actually was decided on and
All right.
and there was nothing there. But just for the record too, it's kind of important to have that.
All right, well, thanks for pointing that out. So we'll remove that consent agenda. Um, and then just approve everything else. Any other questions there? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion is carried. Um, next item is ordinance eighteen. Amendment to chapter two, Article four of the Code of Ordinances. This is for the Redevelopment Authority for a second reading. Um, Reginald, did you want, other person, Kirst, did you want to address this point?
Sure. Ordinance eighteen of twenty twenty-four, amendment, amendment to chapter two, Article four, Division thirteen of the Stone Code of Ordinances, Redevelopment Authority, section two dash five three seven, parent C. Section two dash five three four, parent C, to change the coordination position from the city finance director slash treasurer to a staff person designated by the city council in addition to changing Redevelopment Authority RA, Redevelopment Authority R V A. Um, and I salute.
Your second?
Again.
Second, buddy. Was the examiner, other person, Hersch?
This just kind of cleans up the language. I mean, in our ordinance, we always, it says RA in uh, the whole city calls it R D A, so it's like this or that. And then also for the staff person that was designated to help schedule the R V A meetings and help kind of um, advise the R D A on some of the procedural thing. It was always a finance director and now um, we want to switch that off to who the mayor of the city council thinks is, is the better person for that position. So we didn't want to be locked in to that position all the time.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Uh, the next one is the resolution of the library. If the library board representative would like to make that motion.
This is Resolution one forty-nine of twenty twenty-four. The yearly resolution costing for this year, twenty twenty-five exemption from the Dane County Library Tax. That was so clearly planned by Jim Ramsey. I salute.
Is your second?
Second.
Second, if I all in person, last thing. Anything else you'd like to say? No, it's just my gaki. We're good.
Well covered.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. And then the next item is the Sustainability Plan, which we kind of covered the big picture. Um, so as I mentioned, what we're looking for tonight, we're not necessarily looking for action because there's a lot there to digest unless you feel like you're comfortable doing that. Um, but we are looking for comments to be submitted to the clerk. I put, I put over seventeen, if that doesn't work for you guys. Uh, we can certainly push that back. Do I have the right week? Are you meeting the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth? So we can actually push that back on October twenty-fourth. So that gives you two weeks. If everything's in by Thursday, if we do the council packet or the Sustainability Committee packet on Friday, then it would be ready for that meeting by the wrong week, so.
So we meet next on like, October twenty-second.
Yeah, but it would go... It would probably come back in November then. Is that doable for you guys?
Yeah.
Okay.
So when do you want our comments by?
Uh, the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so that Thursday.
Yeah, we, in a couple of weeks. They can just send them to Candy, um, and then she'll gather them. She'll pass them on to Sustainability. They'll meet the following Monday. Implement any changes that are in there, clarify anything. And then we'll get their final recommendation and then bring it back to council in November. And then we'll begin the implementation process. That's um, doable? Or anything else you want to talk about as far as that? And then the last point, uh, we had an initial conversation about what the future of that committee could look like. And that could be whatever the council desires because we formed the committee here. Um, it could be that they continue as is and meet periodically to help provide updates or oversight. That could be delegated to the C A C P committee, which is kind of the oversight committee or the Sustainability Committee. Those updates could come directly from the city council. I think there's recommendations in there to get annual updates from the city staff. We'll do whatever. We just want to make sure that the things that are in the plan get done um, as efficiently as they can and that you guys are updated and whatever merit will be used. They're all having enough for comments at this point. President Reeves?
Um, and it's, you're all having a special meeting related to this next Monday, right? I mean, I guess I'd be interested to hear what you all have to say because if there's work to be done specific and you feel like there's loose ends and things you'd like to tidy up. Um, you know, it seems like it would make sense to continue if you're willing, but on the other hand, nobody wants to create more meetings. Um, and you know, it seems like the plan is to, to, or this will be sort of, the burden will be up to them to this city leadership and for council. So I would guess there may be an end date, but I think I'd be interested to hear what y'all have to say after the meeting as far as what's left on your to-do list.
So would you be looking for a recommendation from the committee? Because some members, if they continue, may want to stay and others may feel like, you know what? I need to move on to my next endeavor when I'm gonna have to be. Is, is that what you're looking for or do you want to give them the direction? I guess kind of all your call. It may be too early to make that decision, but we want to at least put that on the table if you want to have anything to think about that. There's no rush here.
And I think a report out after your next meeting would be, would give, you know, maybe I won't be here long-term for that. But just to um, provide some feedback, here's what's on our list and maybe our end date we're seeing is whatever. So I think I would, you know, I would feel more comfortable if I was here making a decision based on what's left on the to-do list.
All right, all in person, my gaki.
So President Reeves, love hearing that you're very intrigued by what the Sustainability Committee sees. Now, we talked about that a little bit about, about that at C A C P. Um, would uh, the council like to extend an invitation to the leadership of the Sustainability Committee to just do a report back at our next meeting on the twenty-eighth? Knowing that we'll be going for um, the Sustainability Plan itself to be approved in November, possibly at that first meeting as well. Would we like to extend an invitation to Sustainability? Would we like to extend an invitation to Sustainability, come back and talk about their meeting? I think that's what I heard.
We could certainly do that. You're on the right.
I mean, I think we'll, we'll need to, uh, based on the meeting that we have on the fourteenth with, um, that, you know, it's not safe. The meatball we're planning to do at that meeting, I think, is it's not like we have loose ends or things that we need to tie on it. I think that the, in the phased approach of the plan, I think we're, we're very solid on the, on the like zero to three year timeframe. And then I think that, you know, it gets a little bit foggy or just the further out it gets. So. In the, on the fourteenth, we're going to add details into kind of that back half section. But I mean, as far as like the first half of it, I think that the zero to three year, the low hanging fruit stuff is, is established. So, um, I think we'll definitely need to, to come in and especially based on feedback and that if anyone has just initial thoughts on there. Uh, with how that plan is put together, um, that can be included, you know, even if you have a few in the, in the next few days. And we can discuss it on the fourteenth, you know, maybe we pre-um, um, some of the, maybe a longer presentation on a later day. We get some feedback earlier.
So you can have an update from either the chair or from the council member that serves out there. Do you have a preference?
No, I just was trying to.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's kind of where I was headed is, you know, it's just. Adrian, and we're, you know, brought, we'll be thinking, just like, here's what happened with the meeting on the fourteenth and there's what we're thinking of them end dates. If the council confirms and that. I don't see this as a committee that will probably be ongoing for months and years. My vision, anyway.
Yeah, the other thought we had too that I failed to mention is it could be a partnership with one of the local nonprofits. That have expertise in sustainable building would be an example of that. And the reason we discussed that. Um, was because one of the challenges for mostly a citizen-based committee is the opening laws. And those types of things. And it's really difficult for them to, um, sometimes get forums, although this group has done amazingly well, I would add. Um, but to share information offline, if they were to partner with a nonprofit, they would have more freedom to do that. And then they could have the nonprofit submit comments to city staff or to council instead of a, a city committee. That would be the other option that we didn't mention. Um, we did have some conversation about that. I don't know if that's the direction anybody wants to go. But that is another option.
Well, I mean, one of the items on there that Adrian also pointed out too is I think the city really seriously needs to. We talked about this before, is giving a position on city staff as sustainability coordinator. A lot of municipalities have them and then they can work. Through this nice plan that has been put together. Um, I don't know what the budget looks like this year. I'm sure we'll find out.
Didn't really want to ask.
Yeah. Um, and so, I mean, I think even if we can't do it this year, I think we need to really start thinking about how we can find. That position because there, like you said, there are things from one to three years, up to ten years, and that's going to continue to build. We need somebody that, I don't want to keep on putting more stuff on Brett's plate or other, you know, city staff's plate. But we do need somebody that continue to look at this plan and update it, add new things and, and, and continue to meet with. Staff and council and the community. And that is actually probably a full-time position to try that, figure that out. And so I'm serious. And I think if we're serious, really serious about sustainability. We can't keep dumping out nonprofits that we're not paying and that are all volunteer staff too. We need to actually. Buck up the money for ourselves.
Yeah, I think that is definitely the long-term goal. There's some communities that have coordinators. Not all of them are full-time because they have the same challenges we do with the, the state.
Even if we started with that on.
Yeah, so one of the thoughts was, in the last, um. State budget, there was this innovation incentive that was put in there that basically says that if we partner with another, um, another municipality. Or it could be a nonprofit or even a school district perhaps, that the state would, if for up to three years, the state would pay for twenty-five percent of the cost. If you can show a ten percent cost savings by consolidating services. So the idea would be to partner with another community or organization for that position. Because then you would be splitting the money at least three ways, both municipalities and the state, which would lower the cost. And a lot of the work that would be done in one community is the state working, other community may do anyway. So those are conversations that I'm hoping to have at the Legal Success Municipalities Conference, which is coming up later in the month. Um, I'm a board member of Dane County Cities and Villages and we're having kind of a kickoff to the, um, event. I'm hoping that other, um, mayor, city administrators, city managers from Dane County will come to the kickoff. Cause those are the types of things that we can have in a casual atmospheres. Just have those conversations. And see if anybody else is interested in doing that. Because you're right, we can't.
Yeah.
We can't continue to do either way. We can't put more workload on our staff and we can't expect our nonprofits to do everything because you're right, they're volunteers.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I, I think there's a time and place for some of the, the nonprofits and the, you know, my state. Don't have, we can do community outreach programs and stuff, but the inside, the, the land stuff, that's. Uh, we don't have the capacity to do that. We, we want to, I think. Help engage the community and help with, with things that we can identify with, but I don't think. We want that because you want accountability and you want somebody to actually make this a priority. I mean, when you have volunteers, they can do it when they can do it. And if we're serious about sustainability efforts and getting grants, so that's a. Somebody was, that's their job. So there's accountability and they know what they're, they're supposed to do.
Yeah, so I agree. Um, any other thoughts or ideas on this? Otherwise, go ahead. I'm wondering if there's maybe some group out there that, that maybe just contract with rather than have a full-time person. Well, we know. Maybe as, as a start, you know, just do a contracting and that, and that, if it, if it works out, you can throw into a full-time person.
That, that might be some, I, I don't know that off, offhand. I mean, the, you know, factors, but I think they're, they're, they're getting. Dressed pretty, they, they have so many projects going on right now.
Yeah, and they did help with the plan as well.
Right.
So, yeah, I think that we can, we can look around, but it really would come down to is the funding. And the unfortunate reality is the state spending cap has put municipalities in a triangle. Um, you're seeing four of them go into referendum next month. Uh, you're seeing another one imposing a real tax. On their community and you don't have a choice when you do a real tax. So if the council approves it, it's done. If you don't have a choice on that. So one of the things that we're going to emphasize at the conference. Is that we need to gain back some more local control and decision-making process so we can. Have the funding we needed in order to take care of the things that we value in our communities and all the communities that you need and what their values and priorities are. And right now, we don't have the flexibility to do that. So, um, that's really what it comes down to. And I'm not here to make excuses because I do think that our staff has a culture of sustainability and everything they do. Could they do more? Certainly. We all can, even at home. I know I could, you know, so.
That's the key question. I just, there's specific things of grant writing and, and in this plan. And with making connections like that Green Tier Program, you need some, a body to go to meetings and stuff like that. I don't want to overburden. You know, but again, I like the idea that maybe Oregon wants a, a coordinator too. And then if we can share them both. Part-time, you know, have, I think that's a wonderful idea. And I think we should really pursue that heavily because I don't want to lose a whole bunch of. You know, this group has worked really hard for those last several years and they have a good, solid plan. I want to see it go. So, without killing our staff and resenting sustainability. So. Or the mayor, because there was a lot on your plate. So I'd rather have three up yours too. I like up to Zino's, the mayor will do this. The mayor was like, wow. He's going to be busy.
Keep me out of trouble. So thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? So it sounds like there's some things for us to chew on and the committee to chew on and then we'll be coming back here at the next meeting or two. And then hopefully we can ultimately get the plan approved. So I think it's the worst putting together. You know, the priorities and then getting, you know, maybe queue here so we can have these. Take care of the low hanging fruit while we're trying to solve this funding thing. Um, so, great. Um, next item is, uh. We have a couple of items that we would like to, uh, go into closed session for. Is there anything you want to start an open session?
Uh, so item number ten, we are going to be discussing that. Um, so. Sellers wasn't quite ready to have this conversation with developers, so. Uh, yeah, there's no presentation or anything for, uh, number ten. Um, number nine, uh, maybe go right into closed session.
Would anybody like to make the motion, uh? This, this in the, uh, in the spread center of the bottom here? That's pretty vital, man.
No, just my glasses.
So read, read number nine and then.
Potential sale of city-owned properties in six hundred South Fourth Street and five thirty-two East Main. The common council may convene in closed session for state statute nineteen eighty-five, one E, delivering a negotiation of. Of public properties, the investing of public funds or the conduct of other specified public businesses whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The common council may reconvene in an open session to discuss, take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session.
Motion. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, and we have to do a roll call more when we get them ready. For Kristen.
Okay, Abel.
Hi.
Benson.
Hi.
Hayaski.
Sure.
Butler.
Hi.
Schumacher.
Hi.
Hersh.
Hi.
Shurlucky.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Bosnac Scanlon.
Hi.
Caravello.
Hi.
Lagaki.
Hi.
Eleven, holders in favor of closed session?
All right, thank you. We're gonna, well, take just a couple of minutes and go with the closed session.